All right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the city council meeting on May ninth, two thousand and twenty-four to order. Everybody, please stand to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, with a nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call. Alan Pointer. Rob Ward also here. Adam Hand here. Tom Miller here. I'm getting better at. Both, there you go, that was both Nikki Counselor Wood and Counselor Carlisle will not be here tonight due to family emergencies. So I will go ahead and start off with citizen comments. If you have comments. I don't think we have any because I didn't get any comment for. Are we all okay to just proceed? Anybody out there in Cyberland?
No.
Nope.
We got one person participating. Nobody has raised their hand.
Okay. So that will close the citizen comment period. And now we're going to move on to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are the work session minutes, the meeting minutes, special meeting minutes, and the financial reporting. Would any of the counselors like to take any of these items off the consent agenda? Okay.
I would like to remove the minutes of April eighth and April twenty-third from the consent.
Okay, April twenty-third. We'll move them right below the. We'll just make it six A. Agenda item six A. All right. So has everybody been able to review the minutes from April eleventh and the financial report? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand. All opposed, say no. All right, consent or agenda items six A, which is the work session minutes, April eighth.
On the. I remember four of those minutes, which is entitled City Manager Contract Review. It reads as if the purpose of convening a workshop on April twenty-third was for the purpose of discussing options as it relates to timeline for renewal of the contract. And it's my recollection that the purpose of that meeting was for determining methods and criteria for evaluating the performance of the city manager.
That is correct. I would agree with that. So are we going to, do you want to strike timeline?
I think the easiest way to fix it is in the last sentence, remove the words in regards to this matter and replace them with for the purpose of determining methods and criteria for evaluation of performance.
Okay, the new minutes will be amended to that. And would somebody like to make a motion with with the minutes and also the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve minutes of April eighth and recommend an amendment.
Do I hear a second? Second. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. All. Again, say no. And there's nobody. Okay. Okay, six B, which is the special minutes for April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four.
And item seven, which is entitled Provide Direction to City Manager on Code Enforcement. And the last sentence there says that there was a discussion regarding a potential variable fee schedule. And that was actually a discussion of issues with various aspects of the ordinance language, not just the fee schedule.
So in addition to the fee schedule, we want to talk about we were going to also talk about the structure.
Yeah, there were some structural issues. There were some minor word developments. There was recommendations for an additional criteria for appeal.
Try to make that.
My suggestion is to remove the last three words, which are variable fee schedule, and replace them with issues with the draft ordinance language.
I'm generic enough.
Was that issues with the draft? Thank you.
Somebody like to make a motion? I will accept the minutes of April twenty-third. Second. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, passes. Now we're on to item number seven. Citizens concern logging issues at the end of Woodland Road. I'll preface it with Ms. Ford came in last meeting and made a comments and regards to what was happening with the Mast Brothers and the logging up there on Tierra. We decided at that point in time that we needed more information and that the full citizenry also have some clearer and exact information. So we tasked Mr. Hombra with providing that for us. I feel that will be used.
You. Now, when you're back at a staff report regarding some of the research and events that was the genesis behind Ms. Ford's concerns. First, I would would like to state for the record, she's absolutely right. Her comments and concerns are without doubt absolutely accurate about the situation there. Now, the foundational issue that she raised was that the city code requires landowners to take care of the ditch in front of their house or property. And the issue Ms. Ford raised was that the amount of work necessary to do based upon the causation of that logging is a little bit more and beyond a normal expectation for someone cleaning the ditch in front of their house with the mud and the gunk and the other stuff coming down the ditch. She's absolutely right about the level of awareness and concern of the property owner that caused it. I shared within the staff report that, you know, when I learned of this incident, which I learned just driving around during lunch one Friday afternoon. You know, I called the city engineer because he's a specialist on our steep slope ordinance. I called State Forestry. I called legal counsel, you know, I got on the phone. And, you know, there was a change in Oregon Forest Management Practices that really changed the requirement from being a permit being required by the Oregon State Forestry to be in a notification. And they had filed the notification. While the city of Lakeside has a steep slope ordinance that requires review based upon the amount of the slope to even come before the planning commission if it's more than thirty percent. However, it was the opinion of Oregon State Forestry that since the city does not have a complete Forest Management Practices Act, you know, we don't have the biologist, we don't have the topography, we don't have all the other stuff that goes with the force, that since it's within the city limits, they can't and we can't enforce the steep slope until it comes to development. So then it came down to the interpretation of what is development. Well, based upon the mess that's up there on that hill, it's pretty hard to stand and pass straight face test and say what this guy was doing was development. It's a nasty situation. I think that the city has and the city will continue to go above and beyond in assisting people with the ditch issue caused from this particular. We have paid a lot more attention to cleaning it out, including using our smaller tractor up there. And Dennis, our street supervisor, has been out there no less than four or five times doing things that we don't normally do as it relates to the area between the street and the ditch and the ditch itself. We do think that there's clog and perhaps some damage with one of the culverts up there. Not the one that Ms. Ford mentioned, but another one. We do think there's street damage just from the heavy truck traffic. But her concern and complaint is with complete legitimacy and very accurate and and worthy of our empathy. And, you know, the city will do what we can do to help her and her neighbors in this particular situation. And we will do what we can do as it relates to dealing with the cause and effect if and when this same property comes into the development stage, which is something more than doing what happened up there.
Now, I also remember that you sent the Mast Brothers a letter.
I did send a Mast Brothers a letter, which more or less stated that, in my opinion, they were violating city ordinance and put them on notice as such, which allows us to pursue other action at a future date based upon what we have to deal with as it relates to that. Now, Mr. Mast came in to see all and talked to me, and he disagreed with my perspective as it relates to their violating our city ordinance. But no, I did send a formal certified letter to the property owner involved and more or less put them on notice that the city considers the actions taken up there as being in violation of our steep slope ordinance.
And also that you warned them that this will cause problems in the future. Okay. Does anybody have any other questions in regards to this? Can you? And this is probably a legal question. Can you provide that letter to all of the people affected in that area so they can have that for their file?
There's a copy of it in the council packet online in my staff report. It's an unsigned copy, but there is a copy of the letter in the council packet, which is available on our city website. And I'm happy to provide it to anybody that asks. And happy to email to anybody who requests.
I'd just like to say I I share everybody's feelings on this and, you know, we've been told that, so we will continue to help you guys out as much as possible at this point.
I'm wondering if it's worthwhile asking the planning commission to define development within that code section. I mean, right now, we're using the common sense of the words people use in the conversations. From a regulatory perspective, it means whatever whatever the code section says it means. Right now, that section doesn't say anything about that constitutes development. But if there was a desire on the part of the community to have logging adjacent to residential areas being considered as development from a steep slope perspective and we should do draft of the mission.
This sounds a lot there.
Or if you could define at what point does development begin with clearing of the land? If it starts at that point, that would.
That's what I'm getting at because one of the purposes of that code section is to maintain vegetation that's holding back the landscape. And obviously, when you clear cut, there's nothing holding back the landscape.
At that point, we could be considered development, right, from the start.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Not as it's defined right now, though.
Right.
Yeah.
So the council might consider asking the planning commission to consider taking up that task. That would normally be the first step in amending that code. Unless they just did it themselves.
I can certainly support asking them to make that already over in plan.
Do we want to suggest that that happens? Is there any motion? I would move to read the question. Do you want to clarify what we're talking about? Okay, so I've heard it first. A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. All right. So the next one is the city recorder manager contract expiration date. In our last special meeting, we set out to do an evaluation for Rick, even though we had a very short time period with him. I was tasked with summarizing the totals and providing comments. At this point in time, I'm going to just go ahead and provide the numbers and the rest of it for Rick's proposal. So most of these ratings, I'm going to just give you the four, and it says exceeds number four, number three is meets job standards, number four is exceeds job standards, and number five is outstanding. This is in regards to what we're paying our city manager for. City Council Relations, he received a four. Public Relations, he received a four. Effective Leadership of Staff, he received a three. Financial Fiscal Management, he received a four. Communication, he received a three. Personal Traits, he received a four. Intergovernmental Affairs, he received a five. For a total of four. This, all my totals were rounded up and down, whichever, you know, however it fell. So at this time, do we want to make a motion about extending? Or if we just do nothing, it's not enough, but we're just going to do nothing at this point? Okay. Okay, the next one is awarding the bid for Eighth Street Manhole Project. This is the project that we all know about as the slalom on A three. I will get to dodge those potholes forever. Well, Rick has been working with these families, see if you can come up with a resolution on this and he'll go ahead and provide additional information on that.
So the project that sort of created the mess, they actually put the manhole project out as a separate bid during that project, but then decided that we didn't have the funds to do it, so that part of the project wasn't done. So we had an old, three years old, almost three years old bid to do that part of the element, but too old for us to use those bids or to try to get the party to do it. And so more or less, I directed the city engineer to set up a bid notice and the project, and we looked at, at first, we were prioritizing, you'll see that they're numbered in green paint based upon the amount of funds that we thought we could appropriately spend. So we numbered them from worst to okay. Coos County had previously offered to share the load with us as related to this particular project. And they had set aside $10,000 to towards this particular project, which was originally estimated to be about a $58,000 project. Since then, I've had several conversations and discussions with the roadmaster and county roadmaster. Platter?
Slater, Paul Slater.
Paul Slater, thank you. Paul Slater, face to face once and a lot of emails. And we've come to a understanding and after July first, while if their budget is adopted, there will be more than 10,000 available for their side of the equation. It is my expectation, while they don't have a formal budget for next year, and neither do we, that that they will be contributing 30,000 and we will be contributing 30,000. And my intent is to split the cost between streets and wastewater. Those are wastewater manholes, sewer manholes that are causing it. So sewer rates are paying half of it and gas taxes paying half of it from our side. I have no idea where the county is getting their money from. But so we went out for bid, we got more than three bids, we got three bids, and there's a wide range. And in the council packet, there's a letter from the city engineer with his recommendation. While I have perused the bids, I have found nothing to be out of order. And so my recommendation is that you follow the recommendation of the city engineer and award the bid.
Rick, you just mentioned 30,000 potentially from the county and that we would be spending
About the same.
About the same, but then I see the quote that's been recommended is only 38,500.
That doesn't account all the average, so Johnson Rock's doing the work, but we got to have somebody inspect it. And you don't want me being the one out there inspecting it. So, no, the bid stuff, the inspection stuff, having to do the wage analysis, making sure they're getting Davis Bacon wages, that kind of stuff, it's going to be, I anticipate we'll spend somewhere in the low 50,000.
Would a council like to make a question? I move that we adopt the Johnson Rock bid. Second minute. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Oh, one other question. When?
County won't have the funding till July one, so we're we want it done by Labor Day.
Okay.
We'll try to get it as soon as possible, but knowing that the money.
We'd love to have it done yesterday. If they can commit to something in a reasonable time period every month. Okay, good. All right, number 10 is a resolution 2402 authorizing check signers on the behalf of the city of Lakeside. While we discussed in our last meeting, we decided that Alan Pointer, Tom Miller, and Rick Hombra are designated authorized signers. I guess. So I believe I have to read this. We have to read the resolution out loud?
I'll leave the title.
Yeah. All right, if there's no objections, I'll just read it by title. I move the city of Lakeside. Well, would somebody like to make a motion? It's in bad form for me to do it. I move that we adopt resolution 202402, a resolution designated authorized parties to sign drafts in the city of Lakeside chicken with them called back. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Okay. The next resolution, and this is what we talked about in the last meeting also, is this is a resolution, a resolution designating authorized parties to sign withdrawal of area grant funds for the wastewater treatment plant project. The individuals on this, the governing body of Lakeside designates the council president, Alan Pointer, counselor Miller, and city manager Rick Hombra as designated authorized signers for the withdrawal grant funds for the expense related to the wastewater treatment plant project. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I move that the city council adopt resolution 2024-03, a resolution designating authorized parties to sign withdrawal of Parpa granted funds for the wastewater treatment plant project.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. I would like a little bit of background on this next resolution, just to refresh my memory. This resolution is the city of Lakeside, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four expenditure appropriation transfer resolution of May ninth of two thousand twenty-four. We are transferring $1,000 from contingency to debt services.
And I would love to give a staff report about this. Really? Okay. So I'm going to ask you to find two documents. In the finance report, I would like you to find the page that has the wastewater fund, Fund Seven. And I would like you to find the very back page of my city manager report. And I want to refer to both of these. Okay? So this document that's on the back page of my city manager report is the resolution that you adopt. Is the resolution that you adopted this year's budget. This is the end game of when we get done with the budget process. You adopt the budget by resolution. And how those funds are listed on this resolution. Is the limitations, the authorization. For example, it says street fund. Authorizing the spending 6,607,566. Now, that's this, this is, this is what you're authorizing, the very last page of that packet, the very last page of that. This is what you're authorizing to spend. Now, if you go down to debt service under the wastewater treatment plan. On the bottom of the of of this resolution, you go to wastewater, you go to wastewater treatment plant, Fund 7. And you go down two more lines to where it says debt service. So when we adopted the budget for the year we're in. We authorized spending 157,312 dollars towards debt. Out of the wastewater fund. That's what we, that was what was authorized. Now, I would like you to go to your finance report. Which is in your packet for Fund 7 wastewater. And if you go to the second page, the backside, which is a partial page. The first column is what we actually spent. Sometime last March, the city of Lakeside paid their sewer debt bill. And paid more than what was authorized by the budget. Now, we're gonna get a little ding and there'll be a comment in our audit for this year based upon that. But it's gonna be less of a ding if we move the money from contingency up there. So when we end the year on June 30 in two months, so when we end the year. It's not in the red anymore because we've taken the authority of $1,000. From the contingency of wastewater and moves it up into debt service. I do not know how or why. The expenditure was more than what was known when we wrote the budget. But it is not uncommon at all during the May and June council meetings. That people are going back and moving money from contingency. Up to something that occurred during the year that wasn't planned on. It is not that uncommon. We will get a comment, but we won't get a. A serious ding if we cover our, our. Or cover our error and move the money or the authorization of the money up here. This resolution. Is essentially documenting, making transparent. That we are taking $1,000 from the contingency of the wastewater fund. And putting it up into debt service, which we've already overspent. I'm happy to answer questions about this kind of stuff.
Very helpful. Good.
The expenditure was done in March of. Well, the last March we had, so, yeah, and and again, before any of us were. Aware and informed, but it's the kind of thing that people look for in the way of anomalies. And and things that auditors love to look at.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
I move that the city council Lakeside pass resolution 202404. City Lakeside expenditure appropriation transfer. Of $1,000 from the operating contingency to the debt services.
I'll second. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. All right, so the next one is a resolution authorizing. Agreement of services for the fireworks barge and insurance covering. Is there some discussion about?
On the actual contract. Paragraph number three. The last sentence reads, for any rent payment not paid by the due date. And then it ends.
I don't know what the due date is, quite honestly. This was a contract given to us by the barge owner. And I had legal counsel review it and I put it in the packet. I I actually do not know what the date is. I will have a date put on it before I have the mayor sign.
Wasn't the missing date that I was wondering about so much as implies that some action will take place if that date goes past. It doesn't say what that action is.
Oh, three, I was going to page. And Gary was actually fine with this?
Yes. The resolution's okay, you want the contract adjusted?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we should have it.
I'll get it, I'll get it fixed.
Yes, please. All right, so if somebody want to make a motion. I would read up resolution 202405, a resolution authorizing. Mayor Trump decided to run one for him on behalf of the city of Lakeside with the virtue of purpose of renting and ensuring to barge for the annual fireworks. Do we have a second? One thing I have forgotten to do is to allow time for debate. So in any of the things that we've done in the past, if you felt that you didn't have time for debate. Let me know and we'll go back and do it correctly. Right now is the opportunity if anybody would like to. Talk about the motion. And like we said in the last meeting, if nobody has any further talk, just simply say, you know, I. I'd like to close debate and then we'll just take it, move on from there. I still learn, I'm getting there. So at this point in time, would. Would any of the councillors like to be recognized? I say we close debate on this item. There you go. Okay, now. I, I have to slow down sometimes when I read resolutions that are kind of spinning forwards. Now I ask for a vote. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. Yeah, I caught myself before the end of the meeting, so that's good. All right, authorization to hire a city clerk. I know we talked a lot about this in the budget meeting, but Ricky, if you could just give us a brief. The position and what you hope to accomplish on it.
Well. It's really about the balance of service that we give our community. Our, our paper house, our documenting of, of things that we should be doing a better job at. Providing information, getting information out, being more proactive. Doing maybe an occasional newsletter, documenting where we're burying people in the cemetery. With a map, things like that need a. Dedicated staff time for. When I created this job description. I added, I I used the previous city clerk's thing and the previous deputy. We had a former deputy city recorder and we also had a former city clerk. And I sort of took both of those job descriptions and then I considered the items. That are priority, in my opinion, that we have not maintained a. Appropriate service level of service. Create, and so there's items that I've added here, create and maintain cemetery records. Reporter and administrative clerk for the city safety committee. Maintain grant required tracking, both financial and project administration, which will have more ARPA stuff. Create and maintain inventory of city owned equipment and facilities, including maintenance records. None of these, which we have at the level of service, which I think. I would hope that the council would want to see happen. So yes, I am suggesting that. The council has the duty to weigh. The level of service versus the expenses of doing so. In the fiduciary responsibility and I'm thinking this pendulum has gone too far in one direction. And needs to come back a little bit more. For us to succeed, for you to succeed in some of the stuff that you want to see happen here. So really, you know, it's a, it's, it's a, it's a pendulum swing, expenses versus services. That you have to balance, but I'm thinking we're a little bit. Out of whack and a little bit low and recommended to the council that they consider this position.
Questions? Yeah, I, I would agree with you on that. Just another note also, if it is in the next year's budget. Of the first approval of the budget committee to approve the limited purpose position. Okay, so does the council have any discussion?
I'd just like to comment that along the lines that Rick was describing where. The city needs to do better in a number of areas. Filling this full-time position, in my opinion, is not enough. It won't, it won't be possible for one person to adequately do all the things that are listed. It's going to take more than one person.
I would agree with you there, but this is a good start.
Yes, just leaving that out there in the future.
Yes.
Didn't have too high of expectations from one person.
Okay, and somebody like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to. To prove hiring a city clerk.
I now open it up if any councillor would like to be recognized. And say we close debate, everybody that agrees, raise your hand. Okay, debate is closed. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. All right. All right, Mr. Holbrooke, you're up again. This is code enforcement implementation plans.
I would like to ask if we could hold this over until my city manager report.
Okay. So are we all okay with moving this down to the city manager report? Okay. Next is the reports from councillors who attended the League of Oregon City Spring Conference. Not only leaves one person. So you're up now. Tell us what you learned.
All right, I, I told myself I'd try not to repeat what the other councillor said, so. All right, so on April 25th, the three of us attended the spring conference in Plymouth Falls. On the first day, I attended about eight hours of meetings. First three hours was a mental health awareness and it was a lot of information and. Can't say much here other than hopefully it'll help me understand how some of the citizens feel on things, you know, it helped me understand point of view. After that, we did saw a presentation from Marion County Sheriff on the LEAD program. LEAD program is a treatment versus jail program that they have going on in their county. Not sure that our county really has much of that going on. The. Third thing for that day was the one that I think was most interesting to me and this was wildfire wildfire resilience. And in that really was representatives from the state forestry service, from the state fire department. Kind of just making the point that all of us in our communities really should be doing the small things around our properties. To to help us survive in the case of a fire emergency. And in that, they told us about the Oregon defensible space program. And what that is, is where if you go online and sign up, they will send out representatives from the state fire department. Fire board, do every, I'm not sure what they call themselves, but they'll come out, look at your property and make recommendations on how you can make it safe. And the part I have highlighted is for a limited time, people who live in Oregon may be eligible to receive a $250. Incentive after they receive this space assessment. So if you like $250 and you'd like to learn how your property can be more safe, you should go onto Oregon. Defensiblespaces.org and you can sign up. And I left some information about that with Rick. That maybe you'll look out there in the lobby for those who are interested. And the second part of that is the, a community wildfire risk reduction grant. And this is, I gave Rick some more information on that, but this is a program that helps communities like ours prepare for those worst case scenarios. I'm hearing from Rick on a couple of different occasions that we're a little behind on planning. And maybe that grant is an opportunity for us to better those plans. Not sure if we're available for this year or next year, but it's something to think about. And then the last thing for that day was a couple of hours on public safety financing. And then this was a lot, a lot to absorb. You know, we all understand the cost of public safety. And the most memorable takeaway for me from that was. The point that was made a couple of times in the in those presentations was that we should be really cautious. When looking at funding opportunities for law enforcement and not fall into a pit hole where we're. Looking to temporary sources like levies and 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 grants to pay for long-term needs. The point they were trying to make was you you do this, you get an enforcement grant for five years or so. You stand up a department or put a program in place and all of a sudden. You you can't have funding as soon as it gets going and it's hard to keep staff, it's hard to keep consistent service. And it's hard to keep staff, it's hard to keep consistent services, just. That was the point they were trying to make that I took away from it the most. And then the next day, we started off real early in the morning at seven thirty with a. A presentation from a lawyer involved with the Grants Pass versus Johnson case of the Supreme Court. And the question there is, does the city enforcement of public campaign against involuntary homeless people violate the Eighth Amendment? It's deep. Hey, we really won't know what they have to say until June sometime. But come June, potentially how we're looking at this issue could be different. So they were saying that really if we're in the middle of doing, taking action on this stuff, we just got to be real careful and keep that in mind. And we're not committing ourselves to something that we have to redo potentially in June. Along those same lines, I learned about HB forty-one twenty-three, which is a pilot program. That the governor approved that provided eight million dollars for regional programs. To address the Oregon housing goals and Coos County is one of those programs. I was able to meet with the area administrator on this and he tells me that there are about over a million and a half dollars ready in this county. To help us address our homelessness needs and he encourages us to participate. And a point to take away from that is currently federal laws require lakes to have. Designated spaces to effectively enforce public camping laws, parking laws, and other rules designed. To protect public safety. If we're required to do these things, we may as well try to let the county pay for it. So as we're, as we're looking at this, we need to keep in mind that those resources are available here in the county. The next thing we did was what they called a state agency directors roundtable. And from my understanding, these, all these representatives were folks who worked under the governor's office. And they had a variety of things, but the one most interesting thing to me is I was able to speak with the Oregon State Police Director of our region. And when I did that, I asked him, I said, what sort of patrols could be available for small towns just off these major highways? How often do those officers make the loop down into little towns like ours? And he was seemed very understanding of this question and expressed that they would love to get off the highway more. But they obviously have less patrol officers than they would like. And the surprising thing to me and the point he made was. Budget or funds are not the problem. They have plenty of money to pay for more highway patrolmen. They can't find people willing to serve. They literally, by the time, by the time they take someone on, it's like one in two hundreds ever do the first day of patrols. So, you know, out there in the community, if you have a, a family member yourself, if you, if you're interested in that, don't be shy. Because that's a big part of the problem. There's not enough people. Then the last and what I thought was the most interesting thing that I did there was a rural resources grants and funding opportunities. Presentation. And at that, I learned about a community root renewable energy grant program. HB twenty twenty-one. And I've got a lot here, but the gist of it is if we were to include. A solar power system in with our wastewater treatment designs. That included battery bank backup. These grants would allow us to spend up to a million dollars and they would cover it one hundred percent. I spoke with a lady named Sarah with the project and. She showed me multiple examples in the state that were very similar to our wastewater treatment program. And how they implemented solar and were able to reduce the, the long-term cost of the power. And from my understanding, that's our one single largest bill in our city is paying for power for our wastewater treatment plant. So if we're in the middle of this project that we're doing, it seems logical that we try to add this to it. Reduce the power bills and potentially give ourselves some security in case of emergency. Power goes out, but who keeps flowing? And we, we all want that. And then just in relation, in, in regards to that, there are a lot of ways that this competitive. Grant program, but there are a lot of ways where Lakeside really has an advantage. We qualify under two or three or four. Of the different criterias and each one of those criterias moves us to the top. But I really would encourage us to, to try and add that to our plans for the wastewater plant.
Be a good discussion to have with Aaron.
As long as we don't mess with the time, right? Because we're running out of time.
Well, I feel like it could, you know, it doesn't have to happen.
It'd be a lot easier to make happen during the phase two.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Thanks, Adam.
Well, excellent, Adam. Good job. A lot of good information. Thank you. All right, so. Any. We are on Lakeside District Boards and committees. I know we haven't found a person for the airport yet. Did we assign somebody a person for the water district yet? Oh, Alan, your water district? Okay, good. I wasn't sure. So we will start off with the watershed. Mr. Miller, how's it going?
There was not, the meeting is not next week, but. A little info, the white line restoration projects are still going and I believe there's going to be. Later that we're going to see a letter, a letter recommendation for that and. Packet here and.
And is that the one cleaning out the north and south channel or?
No, that's another project that's on. No, the restoration projects are in Benson Creek and Big Creek.
Oh, we have a beach of Templeton.
And the lake levels up right now due to the recent, uh, rain we got, so things are looking healthy right now. Yeah, well, I'll have more next meeting.
Great, thanks. All right, Water District, Alan, our meeting is next week. Ten Mile Lake Association would have been Counselor Carlisle, who's not here tonight. And then Adam or Alan, you're up again.
Yeah, I can have a report.
Hello, the personal business has been not attending me. Okay. And I missed your hand. Lakeside Business Owners.
So the Lakeside Business Owners did have a meeting last week and really they just discussed these upcoming events that are going to get going. One big change that I believe they notified the city manager of is that the, the board. Decided that the timeframe to pull off experience lakeside by Father's Day was just too tight. To be able to do it to a high level and they have chosen the first weekend. Second. Second of August.
August second.
To move the, the same exact event, just to a different date later in the summer.
Was that the second of August or the second week of August?
August second, so it could be the day before or the day after. It'll be two days maybe. That, that weekend.
Yeah, better not rush.
Yeah, 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 just we didn't want to, we want to make the spending effective. And that really requires planning and advertising, not weeks in advance. They also discussed potential new board members and some switching around of board members and they will be voting on that at the next meeting. So if you're interested in that or, or interested in participating even, let, let members of LBO know and attend that meeting. And see how that goes. Other than that, I think they're just very thankful to, from the council and for their support of these events.
Thank you. Okay, now we are at the city manager report.
There are copies on the back table, bright orange. Uh, city manager report, I'm not going to read it all to you, of course, but. Believe it or not. It's election season. Uh, the first day of filing for office for the general election is prior to our next scheduled council meeting, June fifth. Is a starting filing date and August thirtieth is the last date to file. Or council or mayor for the upcoming November election. So just a heads up, I got election material this last week and so tis the season. And you thought we just had elections. Often the city gets requests for letters of support. And in the next page on, also in orange, is a draft letter requested from the. Watershed and Ten Mile Lake Association. Requesting our city's support in congressional acquisition of funds for restoration projects. It doesn't take a formal motion, but I think the, I'm asking on behalf of myself and the mayor. If the, if I can get consensus from the council, that it's okay for the mayor to sign this letter of support. Requesting congressional funding for restoration projects in the Ten Mile Basin area. Another request we got is from. The watershed as it relates to getting state support. Essentially, this is a draft letter to the director of Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. Asking them to continue to support restoration projects in our area. And I'll read the last paragraph. We would urge you to continue to support priority wetland restoration projects in our region. And the Charleston District Office staff and their work to help us restore salmon runs. So the Watershed Council has asked if the mayor would be so kind to sign a letter. On behalf of the city and support of their reach out to the director. Of Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. And again, I'm seeking, I'm sorry.
I thought that was the one that we just talked about.
Um, one we just, oh, you're absolutely right. Okay. The other letter is from the port of Coos Bay. Thereafter congressional money. Thereafter funding for the port project as it relates to the cars, whatever. Port improvements. And so the port of Coos Bay has asked us. The mayor has signed on behalf of the city a letter regarding. It says, the letter says, it is our belief that this port has a potential to become a critical import-export gateway. For a variety of valuable commodities originating throughout the United States. The port of Coos Bay has many elements that makes it competitive for, for compensation. This project investing in West Coast port infrastructure, this port, this project will create thousands of jobs. We kindly request the United States government and relative, relevant authorities to seriously consider. Our letter of support acknowledging the advantages and opportunities that this project can bring. So we are being asked by the port to have our mayor sign on behalf of the city. A letter of support seeking congressional appropriations for the port project.
Um. By that, I assume you know.
Your council meeting is going to be extremely long. So currently we have three public hearing scheduled. And one of them is an important issue to the council. The item that we put on every agenda. Code enforcement. We have to have a public hearing for the organs. We need to sort of flush out what exactly we want the non-land use ordinance to be. So essentially, the code enforcement changes that you have directed are going to come in two phases. Phase one is a June council meeting with an ordinance changing the enforcement process. And changing some language that does not involve land use. So that's going to be the ordinance you'll see in June. Then in July, you'll see the ordinance that deals with land use issues as it relates to enforcement. Because we have to give the State Department of Land Conservation Development thirty-five days' notice. Before we have a public hearing involving land use. So in the June council agenda, we have the draft ordinance. And the draft code enforcement ordinance is the blue ones on the table in the back. And I got five more up here. So what I am suggesting is we want to give the public the opportunity. To be involved in the code enforcement changes we're talking about. We want to have the time and we don't want to be in a rush. And we really don't want to do it at the same council meeting where we have three public hearings and a budget. So I am suggesting that the next best step for our council's goal of code enforcement. Is that you have a special meeting during the first week of June. Keep in mind, our June council meeting is June thirteenth, end of the second week of June, almost mid-month. And I am suggesting that the council have a special meeting on June second or a date close to it. In which we announce a public hearing and this is the opportunity set aside for community. To come and speak their mind as it relates to code enforcement. And then you have a special meeting with a public hearing. And then you have a council work session. And you go through this draft ordinance and you do what you want to do to this draft ordinance. So we can adopt it on the thirteenth and not spend an hour on it. Because this is important enough that you want to spend two or three hours. And you can do that on your thirteenth meeting without delaying it, in my opinion. So the city manager is recommending a council direction for a special meeting. And June second is a Tuesday. Um, of June, I believe. I'm sorry?
It's a Sunday.
Oh, whatever is the Tuesday, that's the first Tuesday of June. We can't do it on Thursday because we've got planning commission. For, June fourth. Thank you. So, so I'm suggesting that you have a special meeting on June fourth for the public hearing. A single issue, that's the only thing we're going to deal with. Allow people to come and speak their mind on code enforcement and then you. Close the meeting, open the work session and just have the council go through this draft ordinance. And figure out what you want to do. And so on the thirteenth, you're just adopting the ordinance. That's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Rick in this. I think we have. Not dedicated as an entity to this or as in doing it in other sections here that. And we really need this. We're at the point where we're going in a direction right now, but we need to actually. Get enough involved, right, Josh? You know, so I don't know what everybody is, is able to, you know, but. So we're very good with it?
Yeah.
Six o'clock, okay, what time? What's six o'clock, yeah?
And we will publicize the, out of the.
Yeah, make sure that everybody knows this. And we're trying to publicize it ahead of time without a fact, so.
Yep.
I want to make sure that everybody in the city knows about this meeting. You know, and there's the big, this is the big move for the city and we need to make sure. You know, and there's, this is the big, this is the big move for the city, and we need to make sure that everybody's involved, so.
Okay.
Great.
You have my printed, uh, written report, uh, in your packet. With some other items as it relates to, uh, uh, city manager, uh, issues, concerns, and activities. And I would be happy to respond to any questions. Through the chair.
When you advertise for that special meeting, is it possible to include a link directly to this draft so that citizens can really quickly and easily look at that draft?
I will try my best to make that happen. There's copies right up here. And the, and it's in the packet too, it's in the city manager report. In blue.
So any additional, um?
I have no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just saying.
Alright. Alright, it is now. Seven eleven, I'm gonna go ahead and close the council meeting.
Council comments.
Yeah, council comment, oh, I'm sorry, council comments. Why don't we start off with, uh?
Well, just, it's good to see some testing waiting for, especially in the code enforcement. Others as well, but especially. I appreciate the. Focus, being more focused directed towards a code enforcement.
Thank you. I guess I'll be next because we'll just go right around. I'd just like to say that the, uh, ordinance compliance committee, uh, we have five people applied. And it's closing tomorrow, so we'll get that committee going as soon as possible, they'll be working in tandem with our, uh. Our actual code here and there's a lot of. There's going to be a lot of detailed. Work for the committee, so, you know, I, I just wanna make everybody understand. And if you, if you see the committee members around or something like that, just. Give them a little, a little, a, a bit of encouragement or something like that, because they're gonna have a really heavy task in front of them. Um, so I'm very excited about that. And I'm very excited that we are moving ahead with, uh, code enforcement and it looks very positive at this point in time. And I'm very happy to see that, uh. Mr. Harmon here got his store open and running. And, uh. If you guys haven't had a chance to go see it, go check it out, it's pretty cool. That's all I got.
I think I've said enough, it's a nice meeting, I just appreciate everybody coming out tonight.
I just wanna voice my appreciation for everybody who showed up here tonight and also. For those who joined us on the.
Well, and then I also, I do appreciate all of you that came out to watch us, uh. Started along up here, and I really appreciate, uh, Counselor Ham. Report about the OLC convention and the things he learned, that was great, that's great.
Alright, so now I will adjourn the meeting at seven eleven. Thank you, everyone, for coming out, appreciate that. I know it gets hot.